It is six o'clock, it's time for the Historic Resource Board, beginning of that. Come to work for that, and we'll have roll call.
Scott Friel is absent, Louise Machane?
Here.
Shirley Brewer?
Here.
David Maderas?
Here.
And Yolanda Galado Pildato is absent as well.
Can I switch where the pledge allegiance is next? After all?
Yes.
And now we'll stand for a pledge allegiance to the flag. When we begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's go ahead and turn our marks in. We'll have to wait for city court to come back. Welcome to everybody, to the Historic Resource Board portion of our meeting tonight. Thank you for coming. Okay, we're going to have the... Do we have any public comments? This is anybody who has anything to say that's not really on the agenda. They can come up and speak with us if they want to. You're more than welcome to join us and say something. Is there anybody? Okay, we'll close the public comments. How about the informal reviews? Do we have any informal reviews?
Mr. Vice Chair, I have no request for informal project review tonight.
Okay, we're moving on, right on there. Of course, we all know that informal reviews, if you have an idea, if you plan to do something that you want to get through the city, you can come up and share that plan that you have, and maybe we can help you get things going for you, or expedite things for you, or mitigate whatever we can do, the city, to help you to get things started. So that's what the informal project review period is. So that, nobody had anything, so thank you for that. And then, action items. We have action item A, which would approve the affidavit of posting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the affidavit of posting.
All those in favor?
I.
I. All those opposed? Inadvises, except for those who are absent. Okay, action item 4B, recommend to the planning commission approval of a minor alteration to a building in a historic downtown at the address is 205 Third Street. The parcel number is 002-19-001. Staff, do you have anything you want to...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. Todd Kennedy, your city planner, here to discuss this. Before we begin, there's some extra items I'd like, or one extra item I'd just like to pass out. It is an extra schematic that will show the proposal of the site located in downtown, 205 Third Street. The proposal you have before you is a request by Yolanda Torres to basically do a tenant improvement that will include internal alterations, an exterior repaint, and a new sign to 205 Third Street, which previously used to be Mom &amp; Pops. The internal improvements include just basic glaring and plumbing fixtures, as well as rebuilding the bar table. And outside will include a repaint of the building that will include the top part of the building to be a grayish color with white trim, and black down towards the bottom, much like the paint scheme at previously approved Inaka's restaurant down the street. Same exact scheme, and that's like a sample. And the name of the new business will be Unamas Saloon. It will change from Mom &amp; Pops to Unamas Saloon. And after talking with the applicant, they are pretty confident that they are aware of the building permits and the building permit applications, and is with the tenant improvement, the sign review. Also, it's just no more signage on the exterior other than the sign that's proposed outside. Interior will just be basic memorabilia setup and so forth to kind of really make it an elaborate saloon. And so, staff does feel this will be a good project. Staff does recommend that the Historic Resources Board make a recommendation on the planning commission of approval of this project, subject to conditions of approval that are indicated in your staff report, indicated in the resolution. And they're just very basic. They include applicable building codes and fire codes for the tenant improvement, and that it will match the color scheme that has been reviewed by both the Historic Resources Board and planning staff. That concludes my presentation tonight. Myself or the applicant, they are here tonight. They can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, did I miss something? The name of the applicant?
The name of the applicant, her name is Yolanda Torres, and the name of the business proposal is Unamas Saloon.
Okay, before we go to the applicant, is there any questions, any comments? Okay, avoid.
Yeah.
This is to staff.
Yeah. What about the... I can really talk with the owners, or the tenants? About the timeframe, or how long are they thinking to end the project?
I asked that question to the applicant, and they estimate probably best-case scenario, they're shooting, actually, let me just say this, they're shooting for October. They're shooting for October to open up.
Any other questions, your comments?
I don't think we've had this in our HRV packets. Did y'all get it?
Which were the, this particular project?
Yes. It's probably operator. Any, I have no questions.
Okay. Are the applicants, are here, if they're here, if they'd like to come up and talk to us? Maybe we have some questions for you?
Good evening. My name's Yolanda. This is my daughter Nina. She'll be helping me. She'll be my bartender.
Any questions, anybody?
Well, they, basically, I...
That was it?
Well, my another question is, we don't want that happening with the Casa Rosa, when we were talking. Basically, it depends about the money. I think you have enough money to end the project, right?
Yes, of course. Yes, definitely.
Did you have anything in mind you want to share with us today, or anything?
Just, we're real excited about opening. We want to have live bands, we want to have some country, some square dancing. We want to have some zumba in the mornings. Just, we want to just be active and have activities and then do something nice for the community, like the zumba, country dancing, that we don't have around here.
Any other questions, any other comments?
Who's the square footage of that building?
I have no idea. Todd, do you have it there?
Let's see.
Yeah, you should have it somewhere in there. I didn't bring my folder, stayed in the other car.
See if I can find some information right here. I mean, I might have to guesstimate a little bit, but...
Sure.
Let's see.
Yeah, you did fill it out. Yeah. Michael?
Yeah.
Michael filled it out. I don't have that. No, I'm sorry. But I can get it for you.
You can follow up. I want to say it's not real big, it's probably not even 2,000 square foot.
No, it's not, it's under that.
It's under that amount? Okay. Probably around 1,500 or so. If I read it straight.
Yeah, something like that.
That's the customer area. There's things in the back too, isn't there?
Yeah, that's all included, yeah.
That's all part of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've been in there many times, but...
Oh, really?
Not for word you think, but... I wish I could just any...
I didn't, I was just going to say, I was just going to say something. I did come up with the image when I was doing the calculations. About 28 feet wide. You know, I was able to come up with a rough measurement right there, 28 feet wide, you know, the sweep. But that's based on doing an aerial image, so...
Okay, we do know it's a historical building, so everything that goes in there and comes out of there, there's going to be, you know, has to go through city and what have you.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Make sure you stay on top of that, and... Sounds like a good project to me, so far.
Todd's doing wonderful.
I think the colors are good enough. You know, I think it's going to be matching, it doesn't conflict with what's around there. And I think those are good colors, but again, as far as historical buildings go.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so who's going to make a motion to...
So we can public comment?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, public, I'm sorry.
Cara Von?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Cara Von, San Juan Tito. I just, I'm a little bit confused, because I did look at the binder this morning, and it looked like it was going to be black, like Inaka. Is that correct? Because there was a handout here, and it looks like it's green with white trim. So I'm quite confused about what the color schemes are going to be.
It's just a sample that I put together for them. Get an idea what it might look like. It's not the exact colors. The exact colors are supposed to be, they were named in one of the handouts, I believe.
It's a palette, I think they are...
They are, if you want to...
To handle like Inaka, but it's not the same colors as Inaka.
Okay, that's what confused me. I thought it was going to be black, like Inaka.
No.
Which I don't think is really an appropriate historic color for that.
Yeah, I think they need, I think it's already the gray that they're using.
The trimming is black.
Yeah, trimming is black.
And the building will be bright. And it'll be...
Oh, I thought, okay, wait a minute, hold on a second.
Because here is white.
Yeah, the bottom panels are red.
That was just a sample. As far as, I thought, I thought it was going to go with the color. I'm looking for the color itself.
Here.
Where do you want, yeah, okay.
This is what you're looking for, David?
Yeah, I'm saying that the gray is a, the gray, and I thought the, it was, it's going to be a black trim. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. And the building is gray, and the doors are going to be black, and the panels are going to be white, just like the Japanese building. Their awning is black. I don't have an awning. But my trimming will be black, and the door will be black, just like theirs.
Are you going to put an awning, an awning over there?
They have an awning, and that's black. I think that's what you see on the picture, it's not a building, it's their awning. I don't have an awning.
Oh, okay, they...
They have an awning, it's black.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So it looks like it's, you know, all black, but it's not. So I'm going exactly what they're doing.
Okay, I guess my comment is, I'm a little bit concerned about the historic color scheme, and also getting too much uniformity, because I will have two block buildings. Thank you.
Okay, so your recommendation, Kara, would be, as far as... So, too many buildings with a color trim black? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I didn't really see what they're proposing, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
I thought this was it. And, you know, we don't want a lot of uniform, we don't want a lot of buildings the same color scheme. And then also whether it's historically appropriate.
It's going to be gray.
Yeah.
It's a black trim.
Okay.
Similar to the gray. So, but gray with a black trim, it's not black.
And it's like a block and a half away.
Okay. Those are my off-the-cuff comments, thank you.
Okay, what, yes, go ahead.
It's about a block and a half away, so they're not close. It's on the other side of San Juan, and I'm on this side.
I thought as well about the gray, you know, the palette was, you're talking about the gray that Inaka was using, and it want to look like this. So I like this idea, you know, white and gray, this...
Can I walk that way?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So this is all going to be gray. The yellow is going to be black, and that's all. And the door black, these panels are going to be white.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think what Louise is saying, he preferred the lighter pattern for the trim instead of black. It does what Louise said. And I like to see it with a lighter color myself.
Yeah.
I like the black trimming, because it'll bring out these two other buildings, not only mine, but the other two on the side. And I thought that would be great. And it's just a little bit of black, it's not a lot of black.
Yeah.
If you like, I could do black trimming and a red door.
I'd like that.
Yeah, I'd like that. Because the black, it's just a little bit of black, it's not a lot. And it really would bring out the other two buildings.
You think so, huh?
And, yes, and because I'm new, I really need to, it needs to stand out for me. I need to do well, because I'm planning to open another business here or somewhere.
Yeah, but the thing we're looking for is historical authenticity, and not get away too far from that, and we're suggesting that. And it sounds like it's a little further than we would like to go as far as the city goes. But those are just our recommendations. I'd like to see a drawing that comes up with those color, the color palette you end up with, if that's okay, with the city.
Yeah, we had a hard time trying to do it, yeah.
Your red door, I love that.
Yeah, don't you think? And the Japanese have a lot of black. I would use less black than them. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I would lose, I am going to use less black than them.
Okay, we're here.
And if you like the red door, we could do the red door.
Because you know, a designer, looking at a designer, you know, that's going to give you some kind of a distinctive...
Color, yeah. Yeah, more like a red burgundy, not so bright red, but like a burgundy, deep color. We can do that.
Okay, I'd still like to see the color palette.
Yeah, you know, we tried, and we went to, actually, to the store. You know, we had a hard time, right? We were, even the store had a hard time doing it. And that's something...
Can we speak to them from the...
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. The wife is in the video. Come up here, Nina.
That'll record your voice.
Yeah, so we could try to do what you want me to do. We did have a hard time, but we'll try again. Yeah, but you could imagine, the burgundy door with a little bit of black and gray. And the Japanese restaurant has a lot more black.
So just a splash of black.
Yeah, it's just a trimming, that's all. Imagine it, it brings out the other buildings also.
Yeah, I can go with that.
Yeah, I can.
Louise? Shirley? Are there, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Thank you.
Questions? Any other public comments? Okay, we'll close the public comments. And now we'll have the, do you still want to discuss anything further?
I'd like to ask, is life within the color palette of the historic district?
It's pretty much in the, you know, after reading it over, it's like a variety of colors. And, you know, even the Sherwood Williams palette that I have, it does call out black. It does call out, but it's like a different tone of it. So it does call that.
So would you fit in fitting with the structural district?
From what I can tell, yes, that's correct. But it's like a supplemental color.
Okay.
Yeah, like a, you know, not the main color, but like a supplemental.
Okay, so we'll leave it up to staff to work with, to work with the applicant, to make sure that we're happy with what we're going with today. And I think we want to make a motion, make a recommendation to the planning commission. Who wants to start that motion?
Want to make a motion? Okay, I recommend to the planning commission approval to a minor alteration to a building in historical downtown at 205 Third Street, APN number 002-19-001.
Second motion?
Is that with the recommendation that we see the actual color palette? If we're going to use as close as we can get?
I would like to, I would like to see staff come forward and let, or share it with us, what it's going to look like, you know, if we can get a schematic going with that.
And just email it to the commission?
And again, we're saying minimize the black, try to get away from as much as they did at the restaurant, the other restaurant.
Inaka.
Inaka. And see what that looks like.
So this should be continued to next month?
With the burgundy door or red door, yes?
So this should be continued to next month, so you can see the, bring the schematic forward? Because otherwise, you're not really recommending anything to the planning commission.
That's true.
You don't have that.
Is that the route you want to go?
I do.
You do? Okay, we'll make a, make a motion that we want to move this out for another month, until we see the drawings themselves. The schematic colors and what I have in place. And I think, I think that would be great. I'd go with that too. So that's a motion we're going to make for today. So there's no motion, we're just going to carry it forward. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So that's what we're going to do. Okay, that takes care of item five, which is comments. Do we have any other comments coming from the Historic Resource Board members? About anything you want to talk about? I don't have anything. Yeah, okay, city planners?
No, I have no comments.
Nothing there, city manager?
No.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn the Historic Resource Board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Adjourn, thank you.
Second?
Second.
Second. Start of Research Board is closing. Adjourned, I should say. Thank you all, thank you so much. Stay out of the seat. And your comments.
Todd, can I ask one question? Can I still see Tim on Thursday, or no?
Yes, you can.
That can still proceed?
Oh, please do. Yes, now, yeah.
Yeah, the bank can be less.
Okay, can still proceed on the things I have? Because I want to get it better.
Exactly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, this is the Planning Commission meeting. I think we could skip the call to the roll call and go with the game.
Yeah, do that again, that's fine. Scott Friel is absent, Louise Machane?
Here.
Shirley Brewer?
Here.
David Maderas?
Here.
Yolanda Pildato is absent as well, we have a forum.
So, you have two comments?
No, I have nothing.
Okay.
Informal project review? No, sir, I have no informal project reviews request with me tonight.
Okay. Cancel the agenda. Now, approve the FID, postpone the agenda. So that somebody want to post the...
Can I just, I mean, hit the affidavit of posting agenda?
Yeah.
These are the consent items, so...
Is it possible to talk about four seats?
Does anyone want to pull item A, B, or C, and then...
That's a difficult one.
And then maybe we take the whole consent agenda?
Cara is asking if you would pull an item off of consent for the... Yeah, I didn't have it, so we needed to do that, so.
Four seats?
Sure, that's the way consent is supposed to go. Supposedly simple matters that don't require a lot of conversation, you know. So, I know this is, you got thrown into the driver's seat. I get it. So, would the commissioners want to talk about items A, B, or C, or some of the other members of the public that wants to talk about?
Want to do that, or do you want to prove A and B first? Well, wait, and just to prove them all together.
Let's wait and do it all together, you can...
All right, Cara Von, on four seat.
Thank you, members of the planning commission. Cara Von here, San Juan Tito. And I did want to address, and I'm sorry I missed your last meeting, I was on vacation, your proposal to separate the Historic Resources Board from the Planning Commission. I'd like to make some comments on that, if I may. First of all, I do appreciate all the time that you spent reviewing this particular item, because it's really important to our city. Personally, I think it would be a mistake to separate the Historic Resources Board from the Planning Commission, especially given the size of our community. And I'd like to give you some reasons. I'm going to give you the negatives, and then I'm going to give you the positives. So, on the negatives, it would be a significant expense for the city to staff another committee. Also, I just wondered if there are enough people who would be willing to serve on that Historic Resources Board. Third, applicants will have to wait a longer time to get their projects approved. And then finally, I'm concerned that the Historic Resources Board would be marginalized, that it would not be taken seriously if it's, you know, over here. Then, just to go into some of the positives for keeping things the way they are now, it is the planning commission's job to oversee the built environment in this city. It is a historic city, and therefore, the planning commission should be well-versed in all aspects of design and regulations governing our historic city. Instead of spending money to staff another committee, it would be appropriate for the city to set aside money for training. There are so many opportunities. For example, the California Preservation Foundation just sent out an email, which I think Todd forwarded to you. In September, there's a noon time webinar for one hour on appropriate infill development in historic city. And it only costs $40. I think this is very relevant to our city, because we do have lots that are open for development. We have that big parcel across from the, what is it, the Mission Garden Apartments and the Valero Station. So, getting some training on appropriate infill using Secretary of the Interior standards, that would be in the planning commission's daily work. Also, in September, there's a multi-day conference titled Decoding Preservation: A 360-degree Look at Preservation Organizations, Polities, and Practice. It is in Southern California, in Pasadena, that, you know, it doesn't cost a whole lot of money to get there. And that course, I think it's a multi-day, is $75 to $150. That would be extremely worthwhile for planning commissioners to learn about. Anyway, and then there's the annual conference in May. Next year, it's going to be in Sacramento, a lot to be learned. Training does entitle us to be recertified with the state as a certified local government. I think you only have to do one training a year, and it has to be submitted to the state. And once we are recertified as a certified local government, we can apply for grants. They have pass-through grants from the federal government, and we've gotten several in the past. Also, our city, we have excellent design guidelines, an entire book. And that was put together tirelessly by a big citizens group. I think we spent a year or two years on that thing. You should all have a copy and be familiar with it. And it, you know, is specifically for our city. And, let's see. And also, we have an excellent historic preservation ordinance. That too was developed by a committee, citizens committee, and then the planning commission, a former planning commission, went through it line by line. And I think it took them about a year. And there might be some little minor tweaks that we've discovered, but other than that, I think it's really in great shape. Now, I know we're all volunteers. You are volunteers, so time is valuable. But just about everybody in this city volunteers. We are totally masked out. So, you know, we all love our city, and if I can say it, sometimes you just have to suck it up, you know, and do what you have to do. So, I've spent a lot of time in the city, I've volunteered a lot of time, I know you guys have. But really, I think it's a big mistake to separate the Historic Resources Board, because frankly, you're doing a pretty good job. Just wish you got a little more trim. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Another, another comment?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think we recommend the, to approve the letter, but as draft? No. You know, for, to submit the, the...
City council?
The city council? As, as draft?
As a draft, okay.
Yeah. See what, what, what are they thinking about the...
So push it along to council, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but as draft.
As a draft, okay.
As proposal, not recommendation. And I think the...
Sure.
I agree with that. You know, we've done a lot of thinking about this, and I did hear what Cara had to say. And city council may say this is not gonna happen, and so we will suck it up, and we will do what we were appointed to do, myself included. I, I think it's the best path to separate the two committees, or board, and a committee from... I think they're gonna get a lot more detailed into the historic resources aspect of it than we have been. I think that things have fallen through cracks. I think that, that's worrisome for me. I think that, in my mind, a lot of changes don't have to be made, because I know darn well that the amount of time and hours that the volunteers put together has already been approved by the state. I don't see any particular reason to change a lot of stuff that, that's already been approved. I don't know whether we're gonna be able to get people to do it, and that may be an issue if we get down the road. Is that we're not gonna have enough people to do that, and if so, then if so, then just keep on keeping on. But it's my recommendation that we send a draft on to the city council to see where, where their thoughts are as far as what we're doing and selecting those five people to serve on that, if they can get them. And, you know, David and I would still be there to kind of bridge the gap between what we've done and what they're doing. And, you know, there's most of the things that we've been doing, but we've not been doing the educational aspect of the plan. And we have not been, as far as I know, the city has not done your part as far as, every four years, I believe, it is submitting, you know, an itemized list of the historic properties in San Juan Batista. That's one of the recommendations that, that this state has made, so those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you Cara for bringing up your thoughts and comments. I thought when we got into this from the very, very get-go, that the public wanted, for us, that's the feedback we got from the public, and that we wanted to go forward with this, and I didn't, I thought it was still a good idea. I think the work that we put into it and the consideration that we, we did a lot of research, we did a lot of study, I did anyway, and I know Shirley and Luis did, and coming up with these conclusions. And I think we're ready to go forward with a draft letter to the city council. I think they're expecting us to come forward. And it's their decision to begin with. If it's just an idea to, to bring forward as a suggestion on our part, that we would be backing it up with the research that we come up with. I, I think we'll leave it up to the city council to make that decision for us. And whatever they decide, we'll go with it. We'll suck it up if we have to, or we'll go forward what we think is... They're gonna, they're gonna make the selections. They're the ones that are gonna be living with it. We'll all be living with it eventually, if we ever go in that direction. Either way, I'm prepared to do two of them. I think Shirley put a lot of work into this, and I've supported her on many of the thoughts that we put together. We, and I think my recommendation, my answer right now is to go forward with a draft letter to the city council.
Just, if I can just make a quick comment on something that was brought up earlier in Cara's testimony. I do want to just address something about the certified local government aspect. I did reach out to the State Historic Preservation Office, and they did confirm for me that we actually are certified. So, I mean, and that was just within the last couple of months or so. That was from our, you know, the chief public, or the chief representative who handles local government. So I just want to make that point clear, you know, so, yeah, so based on their records, we are certified. That's just a matter of...
Absolutely, and that's important too. And if we went back making a lot of changes in something, or another committee did that, then, then we'd have to do the whole process over again, and that just does not make sense to me.
And of course, we invite anybody to join us at the city council, you know, especially the public, if they have any comments to add to it. So whatever was stated here today, we can carry, we can carry that forward to the next city council meeting. So I'm happy with that, and it is in draft form, and we're still open to where we're gonna go with this. And the last thing would be city council giving us the final direction. And that's all we're looking for. So, we make a motion that we will, I'll make a motion that we will send the letter forward to, forward it to the city council.
As draft?
As a draft.
As a draft.
Okay. And this, and this is for 4C in particular, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
So, yes?
We, we still need to approve the consent agenda for A and B. Still looking, still need to, just formally to do that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the posting agenda and item B resolution, the minimum resolution, 2019-16 for 301 Third Street, to eliminate the condition of approval referencing Part B.
I'll second it.
On the approval?
Aye.
Aye. And you, Luis?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, any opposed? Then...
And then you made a motion already for the item 4C already, as a draft?
Yes.
As a draft?
Yes.
Okay, action items. Consider a recommendation from Historic Resources Board for a minor alteration to building at 205 Third Street, date being 002-19001. In an alternative district to include paint and signage.
Yeah, we made a motion to go forward to the next meeting and carry this forward. And I think we want, I will make a motion during the planning commission, that we carry this forward to the next meeting until we see some drawings or diagrams of the actual paint scheme. Or the building itself.
Very good.
And of course, we're not holding up anything else.
I, I want another one recommend for, for the staff. For the people who approach to the office, and try to avoid these delays. That they bring the proper, you know, proper plans or complete, for example, they want a black tree here, just put black tree, or, but they really want, or on a schematic plan with the color and the, color this and the sample right here. I think this is kind of simple, and they can do it. And we can avoid our delays in, in, I think, in the future. I think so.
That's good. Okay, is anybody gonna second the motion?
Second.
We're gonna vote. Vote, I, I, that we set up, as far as this goes, second it, and then we're going to carry it forward. There's no motion. As I recall. Sorry about that. I keep thinking, I keep thinking of the letter. Okay.
We're all in discussion on this, session eight?
Yes.
So should the draft, the draft housing element by EMC Planning Group? Staff report by Associate Planner, Todd Kennedy?
Yeah, that's me. Thank you, members of the commission, Todd Kennedy, your city planner. Tonight, what we have before you is something that's been in the works now for a while. Introduction of the housing element that's underway right now by EMC Planning Group. For tonight's meeting, our discussion is for two reasons. Number one, just to introduce EMC Planning Group to the Planning Commission and the public. And number two, to show you the progress that's been made of the housing element, and to outline the next steps in the process. You know, between now and to completion. So that way, it sounds like it's kind of a checkpoint. And so, anyway, I just want to take the opportunity and the honor, really, to introduce Mr. Martin Carver of EMC Planning Group. And he has a presentation for us tonight, and he'll be able to fill us in. So, anyway, Mr. Carver, go ahead and take it away.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Martin Carver with EMC Planning. Can everyone hear me okay? A pleasure, a pleasure to be before you, to meet you all. As Todd was saying, the purpose of tonight really is just an introduction. I did a PowerPoint, but I almost was thinking it wasn't necessary. Got just a couple of slides, and I'll run them through. This is really a precursor to next week. Next week, we have a workshop, next Tuesday night. And before we did that, we just wanted to set the stage for it. That's all we're doing here tonight. So, the background. I think it's worth noting that we began this process really on an expedited timeframe. We're under the gun to get this housing, housing element adopted. We began work in February, and immediately had a workshop later in February, all with the intention of moving to adoption in a May timeframe, so that would give us time to work on yet another version of the element by the end of the year. We're a little bit behind in that schedule, but it indicates that we're moving quickly. And we haven't done a deep dive into the existing housing element. We've been very strategic about the changes that have been made there. We've already run the, the element by Department of Housing and Community Development and the like. But before I continue along that line, let's go back to the February 20th workshop that was held over in the community center. We spent time reaching out to organizations, we did direct mail. At the meeting itself, there was a good discussion about potential sites for low-income housing. That's one of the things that will come up next week, is a discussion about which sites might be rezoned for affordable housing. There was discussion about incentivizing higher-density housing and what it would take to do that. There was an acknowledgement that there needs to be some adjustments made for low-income housing for the requirements that exist today, in part to comply with new state regulations. We heard from residents a willingness to use land, or that they knew of land, that, that they were willing and could support new housing on. Overall, an attitude of support for affordable housing, and not so much. Perhaps dislike is too strong of a word for the new housing that has been developed. But that's what I have here, dislike of a new, of the new higher-cost, lower-density housing that's been recently developed. That's probably overstating the case, but it came up. So, we, under contract in February, had the public workshop in late February. We spent March pulling together quickly a document to be able to present to Housing and Community Development for their first early review. We do that so that we can get a sense where they see the problems and what needs to be changed. And so we went through that process. We delivered a preliminary draft to them in early April, April 5th, and then received a letter back from them on June 7th, and they listed a few things. That hardly ever have received, I've done a few of these. I can't remember a process where they haven't listed a few things. They reminded us that we're on a four-year schedule, for example. They also pointed out that SB2 grants are available and out there, and that if you have an approved housing element, you're in line for those SB2 grants. This is a new, new carrot for the state. I mean, for years and years, there wasn't really those grants, either of those, community development block grant. But the SB2 is a new pot of funds, and it's a worthwhile pot of funds that's a fairly significant amount of money even for a small city like San Juan Batista. They've reminded us that zoning for emergency shelters is gonna need to be fixed in the zoning ordinance before they can certify the element. There was, there was a reference to transitional and supportive housing, some minor tweaks that need to be made in the zoning ordinance to make sure that they're handled correctly, to be consistent with state law. There is a new requirement in housing law that requires, that requires that we document requests to develop properties below anticipated densities. So we've always had these lists of properties that are available for housing. And we say, alright, well, these are, these are zoned R3, and they're appropriate for affordable housing. These are zoned R1, and they're appropriate for single-family residential use. Now the state is actually saying, alright, well, those are three properties. Did someone come in and develop one of those properties? And if they did, did they develop it at the density that you expected it would be developed at? Or did they develop it at R1? I mean, some zoning ordinances allow just that. So, these new requirements, we've had to catch up with. And last, but really not least, adequate sites. One of the things that we have to fix in this existing housing element is that we have to find another affordable housing site to be able to demonstrate that we have sufficient sites for all levels of income in the city. And that'll be part of the conversation next week. A big part of this, or another aspect of the work that we're doing, I'm referring to as implementing ordinances. A lot of the, a lot of the things we do in the housing element show up as programs or policies there, saying the city will rezone to provide affordable sites, for example. The city will undertake a zoning ordinance change to provide a process for reasonable accommodations for people that have disabilities, that kind of thing. Because the city is a few years late in adopting this housing element, it's actually incumbent upon the city now to catch up and do this ordinance work, not just say that they're gonna do it. So we've actually prepared a package of ordinances, and will be talking about those next week as well. And really, there's nothing worth shaking there, really. Again, it's just achieving consistency with state law. The one thing, the one exception, of course, is finding, we've identified three sites through the workshop that we did in February. It's gonna be on our plate to actually choose which of, which of those three sites is most appropriate to rezone to R3. I think they're all currently commercial now, or some version of commercial and mixed use. One is, I think, low-density. So, anyway, we'll dive into the details next week on all of that. Emergency shelters, reasonable accommodations, priority service for sewer and water, accessory dwelling units. These are all cleanups, essentially, to your zoning ordinance that needs to happen, and they're coming, they're coming down the pipe, so to speak. So, schedule. We did, after hearing back, getting the letter from HCD, we did do final revisions. Final revisions, our next set of revisions to the housing element. And we published a new draft in July, sort of mid-July. We also undertook the required environmental analysis, the CEQA initial study. And that just went out for 30-day public review, starting on August 1st. And so that will, that review period will end on August 30th. And that covers not just the adoption of the housing element, but also any rezoning for any of these three sites, so that you have the environmental review necessary for making that decision. We, as I've already said, we plan on having a second workshop next week, next Tuesday, over in the community center. After that, we're gonna come back to Planning Commission in, at your September meeting, your regular September 3rd meeting, hoping for formal action and a recommendation to city council. And thereafter, we'll go to city council hearing, which we're slating right now for October, mostly because I'm gonna be at APA Council, APA Conference on the 17th of September. And all of my colleagues are as well, so we're literally not here to be able to present the item, otherwise we would have done it in September. So, we're shooting for now October city council meeting. That's all I have for you tonight. I just, we wanted to, wanted to introduce this, let you know what's coming, and help advertise the fact that we have this workshop next week, and hope you all can attend. Any questions for me?
I would like to just summarize if I could. This is, so, so during my interview process, and then you know that there was a community panel that I was addressing, all the candidates... panel that I was addressing, all the candidates were, and I sensed polarization on that panel. Some absolutely wanted no growth at all, and others approved of growth as being the only way the city can find revenue to sustain itself. And so, this is a common issue, and this is a policy document that talks about how big will we grow and how fast will we grow? And so, the numbers that are required by the CROG, the RENA numbers, are fairly modest, and we've met a lot of those. All the, all the market rate housing, of course, we've exceeded the expectations. It's only 45 houses, which is 5% of our total number of close to 800. So, it's just a really important document. So, when Todd and I first started, when this was introduced to me four weeks ago, I asked that we slow the process down to give the community a chance to read it and understand it moving forward, because this is really a big part of our future growth plan. How many housing units will be built, where will they be built? And it talks about the size and population of our city growing or not growing. So, I think this is a good tool and wanted to ensure that the community had a chance to really understand it. So that's why we scheduled the second workshop, so that we can take our time and really. So Todd, I don't know if you know anything else?
No, I think pretty much everything has been covered, what Martin and Todd just stated. But yeah, we stay tuned, next week over in the community hall, we have our workshop. Okay. So, yeah.
Yeah, I just, thank you for, Martin, for bringing that forward. And I went through the housing element, read by Vegas, you know, and it reads very well. I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of questions I might have, you know, not at this time, because I think it'd be something better for the workshop. But I can see where you're coming from, Don, as far as the polarization goes, and what have you. I can read that in the document, you know, I think, I think we're just not comfortable with this docu, with the housing element, because we haven't really done this in the past, as far as, you know, we were more comfortable with the general plan of having. Now, this is like a state requirement.
Right.
And, and, you know, like, some of the, some of the material I read, there's over 2,700 state legislation, bills and what have you, just on zoning alone in the state of California. And, you know, that is a large pill to swallow. What does that mean for a small community like San Juan Batista in the midst of so much growth that's happening around us? And here we sit over 200 years, and we're just barely meeting, just barely getting up to 2,000 population. And, and so I, I'm hoping that the next meeting that we attend, the workshop, really unfolds what we, where we're going, to, to a degree where we do get united front on this, because I think it's a really important document. And this fits right into our general plan, and we should be doing a general plan for the housing element to be such, that we're ready to fill this thing out. The only, the only thing that I feel, because of the polarization, and we're such a small community, and when I read into it, what does this mean? You know, because when you're out there and you're hoping we're, be a part of a grant and all this other stuff, that we can evolve a small community, how do we weigh amongst all the larger cities, larger communities? How do we weigh against the county that wants to do certain things versus what we think our direction? You know, I think the message that we want to bring forward at the next workshop is, what's unique about San Juan that we're going to carry forward into the future? That, that the state will honor, that housing element will honor, because that's where we are as a community here in San Juan Batista, you know? And, and I wonder, you know, you get reading into all this stuff, it's like, whoa, you know, this is, this is like, not so much new for us, it's a direction that we haven't been doing that quite, that, in that, going in that direction for the last 200 years. And here, and here we're sitting upon one of the state's icons, which is the mission. And, and it represents to a lot of people outside of this community, not to mention the world, you know? And how do we, how do we protect that? And, and celebrate that to the point where it becomes a viable part of our community? In that it allows us to have some weight in what we say here, and how important it is for us to say as a small community, because that's who we are. You know, everybody who comes here keeps saying, I've moved in here because I like it small, and what have you, and like to say it that way. So that's a big pill that we would like to throw into this mix and see how we come out of it. And I think the polarization might find some ways to unite us if we come up with a good viable solution to all that. And, you know, the future is going to be right there. I mean, you're going to walk into it with our eyes wide open. And I think San Juan Batista is a beautiful city to, to go on with the rest of the great cities that we have in California. Anyway, I, I think, yeah, I think that's one of the things we need to, what part of that element is, is unique to San Juan, that we need to make that part of that element? I just, you know? Anyway, that's it.
No, I have no questions, not this time.
Comes from the public?
Question. I'd like to know. I'm just wondering where we can get a copy of the CEQA initial study, and also a copy of the draft, because I'd like to be prepared for next Tuesday's meeting.
I think the draft is in, over in the, in the webpage in CD.
Yes, the draft housing element.
You mean the housing element draft?
Yeah, the housing element.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Okay, I, I didn't check the website.
And at the library, and?
Yeah. Here at our counter, and we can add the CEQA document.
Yeah, then you can see that too.
Can I have my copy of the comments?
I guess, I'm hoping that at this meeting, honey, I was at the earlier meeting, February.
February, yeah.
Are we going to discuss incentives to get this affordable housing built? Because, you know, you'd have to have some kind of incentives, or they're not going to. And then also, does the city own land? So we could have some nonprofit come in and have a joint partnership, a lot of other cities do that, where the city provides the land and they build the housing and manage it. And we have that Corporation Yard, if that's what it's called, across from the park. Maybe we can move that somewhere else? Wouldn't that be a perfect spot for senior housing or something like that? So anyway, things to think about, because I think we really do need some affordable housing and, and ways to make people build it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's an, I, you know, that's an interesting point, you know, as far as the land that's available, or what, what could be land that is available? And then what, what, what weight does the county have over the city? You know, do we work as a partner? You know, what about our sphere of influence? You know, I always worry about that our sphere of influence is not big enough, you know? And, and why? Because we, we can lose control. And that's, that's, you know, the city is a small city and it's hard to control because of our size. So what does that mean when we have to look at the county, look at the state, and see what kind of wig we have?
So, and you want to?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I want to cut you off.
But anyway, yeah, anyway, that's, that seems to be where, you know, we kind of fall through the cracks after a while.
One of the benefits of what we're proposing is by getting this approved, we'll have access to funding sources that we don't currently, that we've been told we can't touch because we're out of sync. So, community development block grant is a, is a great example. Prior to city manager has that in the budget. We can build infrastructure around sewer lines, we can, we can do other things to incentivize housing, exactly like you say. And that same grant funding can be used to acquire property, so if we don't have it, then that will be available to us, we can apply for it and pursue those. But now we're stuck.
That's what we want to hear.
Another public comment? Okay, close? Okay, Todd, you talk for me.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, missed my place right there. All right. Thank you very much, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we're in, let me see if I can put it out. I don't think I have anything new to report, other than the general plan timeline, that's, you know, basically the general housing element. Okay, there's something I'd like to just report real quick. On page, the second page, item nine right there, under, under the building and planning, the brewery. There has been some activity, an uptick of the brewery. I have received a set of plans that was submitted. However, I do not have an application and an application fee at this time. So, that is something that the applicant has told me a few times, that they're going to get it to me, they're going to get it to me, that they have emailed, emailed me a set of plans already, they turned in a hard copy, but they can't really do anything with them, not without application and application fee. It's pretty much the same, I can just tell you a little bit about it, that the, based on the plans, that the building, the big red building, the brewery building, is to propose to remain in its place, but be modified, altered accordingly, so that way it's up to speed with building code. There's also proposal on the new building to be built on site, on the exact same site right there, in addition, and also expansion of parking on site as well. This is going to require that pending lot line adjustment to be finished up, though. You know, otherwise the parcel's out of whack and we can't prepare. So, this is a, going to be included, a major historical alteration, site design review, and I think a conditional use permit as well, but that's just off the top of my head, though. So, anyway, I don't want to say too much and have to backtrack, you know, like, you know.
Always we give that.
Right, yeah.
But at any time, we need him to clean up their property and give it a cycle of intensive.
So, sorry, can I talk a little bit about the midnight express?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right. I think that's pretty much all I have tonight, folks.
Okay. I thought the gas station that we have needed in 106.
Okay, Arco Gas Station. Right now, we have received improvement plans that are on, on the desk right now, and they're currently under review with our engineering staff right now. And there is a talk right now, but I, you know, once again, I don't have an application or anything definitive, but the applicant has discussed their canopy planning commission when it was first approved, and, you know, the character of the design, from city council and through the appeal period, of a pitched roof of the canopy with a tile roof. That was approved. The applicant is toying with the idea of turning in a canopy with a flat roof with tile roofer on the side, because there is the interest that the applicant has about putting solar panels on that roof to power the site. However, the way it's been determined is that we need a planning commission amendment to, you know, to go back, because that is a significant change of a design. So, anyway, there's no way the zoning code or any of the designs that allow me administrative, I should say, as the planner, to make any administrative call. That's a significant change, so that will need to come back. And the applicant already knows that. So the applicant is kind of like going this way, going that way with it, you know, saying, okay, should I proceed or should I not?
What about the midnight express, have they, do we know when they're going to start construction on that smaller building?
So, the mayor and I met with the applicant two weeks ago approximately, and they were sure that their plan check process would be completed soon, was completed late last week. However, we've, it's been known to us that they have been in violation of Fish and Wildlife and the care of the wreckage between their property and San Juan Hollister Road. And as a courtesy, generally speaking, to not issue approvals for things, we've been in violation with another government agency. So we've been in direct touch with Fish and Wildlife. We have been assured after meeting with the applicant that the applicant has been in direct touch with them as well. But we'd like them to be, you know, clean moving forward before we issue any approvals. They're anxious to get their construction long moving forward. They asked late last week for PDF approval on the plans that they could share with the bank. I'm meeting with our city attorney Friday, and I'd like to talk to her about that project to make sure we're on solid ground going forward. But they have gone through all their plan checks, they are, they are, they are pretty much free and clear, but they have to give, they have to take care of this burden, they have to respond to the state and Fish and Wildlife to make sure that they've remedied the issues every time they're there. And they're aware of that, and they're working with that.
Todd, I'm reading here about the 70 McElheme, about the applicant wish to demolish the Chalmers House?
Yes, 70 McKelley, number eight right there. Okay, I have not been in contact with them, they have not contacted me now since that time that's indicated on this packet. Let's see, what happened in there? I thought I did. It was back in April, I believe, or I'll have to go back and look at my case file. But the, there is interest of a new potential buyer of the property next door, you know, up against the corner right there, but zone commercial with the property at 70 McKelley, McKelley Street, that's the side of the old Chalmers House. And so, the, there was discussion, myself and interim city manager Ed Tweedies and I sat in that meeting, and it was about just introductions to be underway. I have not spoken to that, the property owner, since that time. I can follow up with him to see where he is and to see if there's any more interest.
Yeah, because they don't remember about the, the last meeting we have, is that home is going to be kept and tried to be saved. Yeah, they're going to be demolished, they miss, they want to rebuild as it. Okay, they can save a wall from that house or whatever, but they don't save that, that home, historicals is, so, we could, that, well, don't forget that home, okay?
Right, the previous city manager was hoping we could move it.
Yeah.
And I did deal with the adjacent property owner on the corner, and talked to them about developing ideas, and he said if we tried to move it, it would simply fall apart.
Yeah, I remember, we talked, we talked about, they can use like some clubhouse or something like that, but?
Or something in memory, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I have not heard from the adjacent property owner since first week in July.
Okay. I think.
Is that, was it a historical building?
I don't know.
70 McKelley? Yeah, it is, it is listed as a?
Then we need to treat it.
It's a historic resource in our inventory, in our inventory.
Then we need to treat it.
Right. Okay. That's it?
That's all I have.
Perfect. So, any commissioners, any comments, any comments?
I, I have, just for your information, I guess I can bring it up here. I, I just, I guess over the weekend or whatever, last week sometime, I went over to the Plaza Hotel project and asked them, what was going, did you know, does the city know that in the Plaza, behind the Plaza Hotel, they're doing some work in the orchard garden?
That is correct, we do, we're aware of that.
I, I think I called you up about, well, anyway, since you and I talked about it, I went over there, because I saw a lot of people working there, and it looked like it was state personnel there as well. And I was able to see the drawings and everything that they were going to put in there. And one of the questions I asked is, is why don't they post it? So we can see as a community what's going on within our community. And why, and I asked them, have you notified the city that this project is going on? What about dust? Everything goes on with projects like that. Aren't we supposed to be involved so we'll know that something like that is happening? I mean, we don't know what kind of dirt's in there and all that kind of stuff. I mean, they're in our community, they're right in our city limits, and that's a historical area. Why aren't we being notified as a city? Why aren't we, why does, why, I mean, every time we do something within the city, it goes out on bolted, you know, with plans and meetings and all this other stuff. They seem to come and go as they want in our community. So I just asked them, and they were willing to share everything with me. And I even was going to take pictures of the landscape architectural design that they had, but it wasn't the final drawing, so they wouldn't let me have a copy of it. But I asked them then, and they said they were going, they were going, they wanted to invite me in to talk to me, and, because I told them I was a planning commissioner. And I said, no, 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 I just, you know, I'm just asking, trying to find out, so I'm asking the city, why aren't we being notified when things like this happen?
So that's a good suggestion, and. So, that's a good suggestion, and to say that's new for me, it's not new that the state agency does what they know, please, and not telling anybody else. Ask any school district, who wants to build a new school, or something of that nature, because they, they follow the state government code, and the state education code, and the state historic preservation. That's the marching orders that they're following, and they often forget about the local. I'm more than happy to go over and introduce myself and find out more, and to show that way. So, I really appreciate you bringing that, my team.
Yeah, but they're really cordial, they're really open to anybody who has any suggestions and comments, and, and they were willing to listen, too. And the person I was talking to, I want to get a business card from her, but anyway, she was with the state. She's been at, she was the architectural design person. To come in and do that, she showed me the drawings itself. The other thing is that, what they are going to put in, they're going to put a walkway into that area with a designed orchard garden they're going to have in there. And, and I don't know if that's historically accurate, you know, for one thing, but that's what they're going to be putting in there. Any suggestions? Any comments?
In addition to what Don was just saying about that, I asked the same question about the, the big building, the big stables building over here, because it's having a new roof. I asked our building division, and like, you know, how does that all work? And that's all through the state, their permitting, their review, their inspection, that's all from the state level down. So, it's just like, you know...
So, who are we?
Right.
You know? I mean, if, if, I mean, if it wasn't for us, they wouldn't be here. The city made it possible for that state agency to have work to do, and otherwise we'd be taking care of it ourselves. So, I, I think there has to be a bit of partnership between the state and the city.
I think we have a question over there.
Yes.
Well, this is not our agenda, so we need to...
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
If it's just a business agenda, we can bring it back and put it on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a public comment.
I'll just make a comment, if I do that or not.
Brief.
Okay.
A lot of guys in trouble.
Okay, yeah, that orchard, it's been the subject of conversation for many, many years, because it fronts on Third Street, our commercial historic district. And there have been ideas to have some kind of a gazebo, so we could have music there on weekends, you know, let the public in. I understand they want to keep it closed, because then, you know, they can't collect the fees. But it's been the topic of discussion, that we should be communicating, and I'm really surprised that they can just do their own thing, and that the city has no jurisdiction over them.
Well, that's the way the laws are written, so, but I'll follow.
Okay, all right, thanks.
They do have a committee for that, too, that they meet regularly, but no San Juan ownership in there. And I met with them one time, and it's very, very difficult to talk to them.
I can move on a closer comment.
Oh, here's one of the quick comments. Yeah.
Cool.
Hi, I'm Anne Frich, with the Strategic Funding Subcommittee for Mon Historic Resources and Community Design. I just wanted to give you a little bit of history. Back in the 1980s, I was the acting secretary for the Community Resources Board, and what we did as a board was, we had a dialogue, we opened up with the state at the state park, kind of letting each other know on a fairly casual, maybe not official, but, you know, we developed really good relations with them. And that way, we knew ahead of time what they were planning, and they listened to anything that we added. And we also got quite, quite a bit of support from them in terms of what we were doing with the community, and overseeing, or making suggestions in any way to any kinds of activities, particularly on our historic buildings. So, my thought is, if you...
I'm happy to follow up with you, we shouldn't be discussing it tonight. So, we're going to be with Diane, and let's, let's rekindle that fire.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Well, we could put it in the public comment.
Right.
We already put it in the public comment.
I went up to the Swain project, just to kind of chat with them, and both David and Kevin were, were both there, and they, very open and showed me all, you know, the project and everything, compacting the earth and, and putting their yard there, because we had quite a bit of public comment on that particular project that they were doing. I was very impressed with, with what they've done and, and the project so far. So, they're expecting their homes to come in on, in October, October 6th or something like that, so, yeah. I just like to keep my eye on those things.
All right. Okay. No comments?
Here, I'll just, I'll, let me just make a quick comment, it's kind of like related to a previous item, but let me just say this, just came across some information, and it was about schematics, and turning in schematics and all that, and images. The point was well taken, and we'll do our best in the future to make sure that it's all in there. That actually was requested of the previous applicants, but all I got was what you have in your packet.
Yeah.
And they were claiming, you know, just cost, even though I couldn't find anybody, and, but they were able to turn me in something like it, and gave me in a sample of, of another location. I know this item's already closed, but I just want to kind of just say this, just for the record. I should have sent it back on that item, but, you know...
Maybe in the future, we won't post it on the agenda until the application's complete.
Yeah, to those people, you know, they must come with the most complete...
Right.
...project, and they don't come so today.
It doesn't have to be, they can give us several suggestions.
Yeah.
They can go with gray and black, and blue and green, or whatever. They can show all the patterns if they want, and they'd be happy with it.
They want the project approved the same, you know, this meeting?
They have to do their part, you know?
Yeah, sure.
Get it started.
Right.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay. Do you mind if you...
I'm good. That's good enough.
So...
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll say it. Only a few more?
Aye.
Ooh!
Good job.